Good morning. Please stand for the invocation and the pledge.
Let us pray. Lord, we thank you for bringing us together on this beautiful day. We ask your blessings upon this meeting. We especially ask your blessings upon our two new board members, Tim and Bob. Please help us in welcoming them to our college and guide them in the decision-making of their board and their activities as part of this Board of Trustees. And, Lord, we ask your constant blessings and good hand upon our college, our faculty members, our students, our administrators, our career employees. Please help guide them in doing the good work that our college was founded and continues to do, to act upon. We thank you for the many blessings you have given us. We ask all this in thy holy name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Too hot now.[75.14][75.14](Laughter).
Not for me.
Good morning, once again. Thank you all very much for being with us this morning. Dr. Law, I believe we have a retirement resolution.
We do. I would like to ask Jean Warcock to join me here. And friends. We should care for our new trustees who take a couple of minutes at the start of every meeting to read a resolution honoring retiring employees, many who have given their entire career to us. And this is very much the case. She is our Dean of Nursing, critical position, and as you will hear, has done a lifetime of good work for us. Has a lot.[142.84][142.84](Laughter). Just stand here and make the nurses stay quiet. Jean Marie Milla Warcock began her nursing career in 1971, joined the St. Petersburg Junior College of Nursing Faculty in 1975, and transitioned to the Health Education Center in 1981 when the Clearwater and Safety Nursing Programs merged. Whereas Jean was respected and appreciated by her AS nursing students during her 26-plus years as she was committed to their learning and success, tutoring them outside of class and offering special review sessions to foster their mastery of the nursing content. And whereas Jean served as a resource to fellow faculty demonstrating creative teaching strategies, new computer technology, and simulation, testifying to the Florida Board of Nursing, contributing to 10, now 25 percent of clinical nursing being simulated. Whereas Jean was an active member of the faculty governance organization throughout her teaching career. She was Chair for the Health Education Center faculty for multiple terms and the Faculty Senate President for consecutive years. And whereas Jean is an active in professional nursing organizations, is a Florida Nursing Association Nightingale Nurse Educator of the Year, a Grade 100 Florida Nurse. And whereas Jean served as SBJC, and a chapter consultant to the Florida Nursing Society of America for 15 years, and was awarded honorary lifetime membership. And whereas Jean was Director of the AS Nursing Program in 2001, as the college was legislatively offered the opportunity to offer baccalaureate degrees. She was very involved in the formulation of the RN to BSN program. And whereas Jean completed a PhD in nursing and became the first Dean of the College of Nursing in July 2002, she led the RN to BN to national accreditation and reaccreditation, the RN to BSN to initial accreditation by CCNE in 2007, the first RN to BSN at a community college in the country, with a successful reaccreditation visited just this past September 28. And whereas Jean while being, has continued to teach. She is an advocate for our students, the nursing profession, and the nursing education. Thus she was awarded the 2010 AAC and Nurse Advocate of the Year. Now therefore, we have resolved that the St. Petersburg College Board of Trustees and the total college community hereby recognize and appreciate the outstanding contributions of Jean Marie Milla Warcock and extend to her our best wishes for rejuvenation throughout the years ahead, said resolution being adopted and approved by the Board of Trustees, St. Petersburg College, this 17th day of October 2011. Here, here.[324.12][324.12](Applause).
Thank you all, very thankful. And my thanks go back 35 years. Multiple Board of Trustees, this is a fabulous college, fabulous place to work and fabulous place to teach and grow and help others learn and grow as well. I'm very, very grateful for all of the nurses that I have helped to educate and faculty that I've helped to bring along and staff and all of you have just been wonderful. I couldn't have asked for a more perfect place to grow, to be a nurse, and to be faculty member and a friend and a colleague. And thank you to all of my colleagues. None of this is done alone ever. You know, it's done through FGO, it's done through the leadership of the administration and then under three fabulous presidents, Bennett, Cutler, and Dr. Law. So we've really, really been blessed here and I'm particularly blessed. But I thank you all for everything, for all of the friendships that you've shared me and all the mutual relationships we've had. And I look forward to this next step and what I hope will be a continuing support of nursing in this area. I recently was at a conference and if you're thinking about, when you're thinking about where you work, think about what it would be like in your community if your program wasn't there. And I'll tell you, our community, Tampa Bay area, would be a totally different place to live and work if it were not for the College of Nurses.[435.12][435.12](Applause).
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Gibbons.
I'd like to make a motion that we rescind this.[463.24][463.24](Laughter). Dean, Dean, don't leave yet. I think I'm sure Mr. Burke will have something to say as well. Thank you so much for all your years of dedication and hard work to this college, but more importantly, thank you for being a friend and to the students and to me and so many others. You have been above and beyond the call of duty. Anytime we've asked, you're always there and you are truly going to be missed. I know Dr. Nikotera probably is missing you already, but, but yes, thank you for everything you've done. And you're right, without this college or that nursing college, the Tampa Bay area would be different, but it's definitely going to be different without you as well. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. I was also blessed that there was the transition time, so we do have wonderful leadership. We have Gil Burke and Jan Whitman continuing another accreditation in February and we have Dr. Susan Baker, who I think is doing an outstanding job. So thank you all for that, that overlap time that really makes such a difference. And thank you. I'm not leaving the community. I'll be here and so am I was on call.[530.66][530.66](Laughter).
Mr. Burke.
Jean, I just want to say thank you all. So it's, I know the nursing faculty is family. It really is, and it not only shows in your cohesiveness as a unit, but also with the students. And y'all just don't take a passing interest in your students. You take a great interest in making sure they succeed. And we're proud of the tangible results that happened because we know our college's passage rate with the nursing is phenomenal. And that's a tribute to, to the fine job that you have led and your team does. And we appreciate you knowing that you're going to stay part of our family. So thank you for all the love you've given us, Jean.
Mr. President.
Mr. Chairman, just as we go through items with new board members, if I can, sometimes a little bit of background will help bring people along.
Please.
Numbers are, of course, something that we're all focused on. Just for your frame of reference, we have 650 students in our Associate Degree Program and 850 students in our RN to Bachelor's Degree Program. So 1,500 nursing students under our care and guidance here at the college, a massive commitment. Let me say that we go for the highest level of national recognition, accreditation, certification in any baccalaureate program. So some of the acronyms that you heard me stumble on were, had to do with the highest level of accreditation that baccalaureate programs can get in nursing. We just had that exit interview on September 28. We expect to get the first preliminary report. Let me tell you, in my 28-year career, I have never been part of a more positive exit interview for an accreditation process. So we can't wait to get the document in our hands to allow others to understand the really great job that's being done by our nursing program and, in this case, the baccalaureate in particular. So Jean is retiring. We have made arrangements for overlap to make sure her efforts are transited to those who will serve behind her, and that has proven to be quite good. So that program, it never ends. The new accrediters will be here right after the first of the year for the associate level. But Jean has done a spectacular job over a long period of time. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Law. Can I have a motion to accept this retirement resolution? So moved. Second. All in favor? Aye. Thank you. Dr. Law, you have an introduction to make?
And I'm going to let Vice President Cooper handle this for me. Okay.
Good morning, members of the board, Mr. President. It is my pleasure this morning to introduce the new Director of our grants, Jackie Skir. She comes to us from WorkNet Pinellas, where she began as a grant writer and then became the Project Director of their grants projects. And she now comes to us with a bachelor's degree from the University of Michigan, a double semester at the University of Paris. And we are very appreciative of the entrepreneurial and innovative spirit that she brings to this position. So, welcome Jackie.
Welcome. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, on to agenda item number three. I am very pleased to be able to introduce our two new trustees. And I'm going to start with Captain Robert J. Fine, Jr. You may call him Bob. That's what Captain Fine prefers. Currently the Headmaster at Admiral Farragut Academy in St. Petersburg. He says he is looking forward to his time as a St. Petersburg College Trustee. He and his wife Anita live in St. Petersburg. She is the principal of the academy's elementary school and they have four children. He has been Headmaster at Admiral Farragut since 1998, but has been associated with the school since 1989. During his tenure, an elementary school has been added and the academy, an honored naval school, has doubled in enrollment, now serving 400 students from pre-kindergarten to 12th grade. He is a member of the Southern Association of Independent Schools and the National Association of Independent Schools, and is a past president of the Bay Area Association of Independent Schools. He has said he believes education is not confined to four walls and is pleased that at SPC, students have an opportunity to partner with businesses as well as to travel and study abroad. His many years as a successful leader of a fine military school in our community should serve him well as a member of the St. Petersburg College Board of Trustees, and we all welcome Captain Fine. Please, a couple of comments.
First count is, thank you very much. It's quite the introduction. I have a passion for education, so I'm really looking forward. I've been in education for my entire career, so this is going to be a little different, public and higher education, but this is a great institution that I've been aware of for the last 25 years, and I'm really looking forward to be part of that. So, thank you very much.
And on a personal note, I mentioned this to Bob previously. One of my closest friends, for years, a couple had their three boys at Admiral Farragut. So we spent some time on the campus over the last number of years and got to meet Bob on a couple of occasions. And as I shared with him privately, he was always held in the highest regard by these friends and anybody else that I have encountered. So we're very fortunate to have you with us.
Thank you.
Mr. Timothy O. North, welcome, sir. Tim has lived in Pinellas County his whole life. There's only two of us out here, you know. His father, his father was a schoolteacher for 37 years and his mother worked for Pinellas County School Board. He is the CEO and President of Amerilife, the nation's largest privately-owned, senior-focused life and health insurance marketing company. The company is based in the countryside area of Clearwater. Tim and his wife Heather live in Bel Air with their six daughters. I have one daughter who's getting married next November. I have a lot of adoration for that kid. This is great. He has served as a board member and Chairman of the Finance Committee for the Neurological Injury Compensation Association. During his time as Finance Chairman, association assets grew from 400 to $700 million. As for SPC, Tim said maintaining quality educational opportunities amidst current budget crunches will be a continuing challenge for the college. He sees SPC's emphasis on workforce education as crucial if job opportunities in Pinellas County are to increase. We believe Tim's community ties and business skills will be a great asset to our board. Welcome, Mr. North.[1035.22][1035.22](Applause).
Thank you very much. I'm very proud to be a part of this board, and I look forward to creating some value with everyone and doing the best that I can to help improve the quality of education at SPC.
Thank you.
Is that enough?
Perfect.[1054.32][1054.32](Laughter). Okay, great. Thank you very much. Other board members' comments. Mr. Burke?
Dr. Law, Mr. Gibbons and I attended the Association of Community College Trustees Conference out in Dallas, and I want to give just a very brief report on that. But before that, you know, this, I want to especially welcome Tim because you know this selection process for trustees, we've been somewhat criticized for only having the male perspective. And with six daughters at home and a wife, I think we're going to rely on you. Oftentimes it goes to female perspective of things here, as you often get, I'm sure, but I'll vote it seven to one on a constant basis.
That's correct.
But the opportunity to attend the conference out in Dallas and it's, there's a lot of intangibles to being part of those conferences. I got there early because I went to a pre-conference seminar, summit on student success. And you can go through the agenda and the different seminars you can attend, and those are very valuable. Obviously, they're very valuable. And some we were featured in. One was given by Santa Fe on the baccalaureate program in Florida, and the Jackson Sasse, their president, spent a good amount of time talking about St. Petersburg College and directed some questions towards me in the room. So that was kind of interesting, too, to have our college featured in that seminar, although Santa Fe was putting it on. And there was just a lot of different, obviously, lots of seminars given, lots of speakers. One of the general sessions, generally from national think tanks, from foundations, good stuff, valuable stuff. But also, the intangible part is the one-on-one conversations you have. Devron and I were at a reception where the Director of Higher Ed for the Gates Foundation was there. The Gates Foundation's dedication to higher ed is tremendous. So here we are talking with the person who's helped make this possible for the Gates Foundation at a reception, in a nice environment like that, where you can really have some good conversation back and forth. That's the intangible benefit of this. And the Executive Director, Phi Theta Kappa, sat and had dinner with us at one of the sessions. And obviously, he knows St. Petersburg College well, but then talking about their program, they're trying to start of this, it's called College Fish, which allows a database nationally, a total transfer for students. If you're going to St. Pete College and you happen to move to California next month, that you have a more seamless education, what they're being funded by the Gates Foundation to do this program. So to have our input in a social setting like that while the meeting, the dinner was going on and then the speakers came afterwards, just tremendous benefit to those types of, what I call hallway conversations and social conversations are just as valuable as I found the seminars that we attended. But one of the overriding factors that was a constant theme of the seminars was admonishing boards to make evidence-based decision-making. Key words, you heard this time and time again, evidence-based decision-making. Don't govern by anecdotal story of this what happened to me, or I know a student who happens, so let's change our whole policy to, but let's base it on evidence-based decision-making. And then you come back and you get this board book, and you see the next report we're going to have in, I guess, a few minutes on the student success, and it's evidence-based, giving us evidence, and hopefully will base our decisions on that type of evidence, but also this whole thing that Dr. Law's been through of the following cohort that we have of each semester and seeing where their success is. And that information, you know, obviously you are ahead of the curve on all this, Dr. Law, with giving us this constant evidence and data for us to make the best decisions possible. So it affirmed what our board is doing, and that's a good thing, too. You know, you always get good to get some affirmation out there. The highlight, though, of the whole conference for St. Petersburg College was our longtime faculty member, Steve Meyer, won the Southern Region Faculty Award, and he and his wife were there. And really, we get two hits at the bat there because, at the ball there, because at the one session, he receives the award from the entire conference. It's a general session in front of the entire conference. He gets spotlighted, St. Petersburg College gets spotlighted, and then on Friday evening, which is the awards gala, again, our college is mentioned as one of the regional finalists. And so that's a very good thing for our college and for Steve to be recognized in that way was a real feel-good event all the way around. So those are my comments I want to share with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burke. Mr. Gibbons?
Good morning, Mr. Chair. I think Mr. Burke did an excellent job on talking about the conference, so I won't belabor that, I won't go into that much, although I will say Steve Meyer was robbed on that board nationally. Three quick things, Mr. Chair. One is, I'd like to welcome our new board members. I've had the opportunity of meeting Captain Fine, and I will tell you, in my conversation with him, it was about, you know, guys, I have to just tell you, I always have a story. It was meeting him with a minority student who could not afford to go to Admiral Farragut, and he was most generous, gave his family and some other folks an opportunity to keep their kid there. And that means a lot to me, to know that we have folks like him in our community, and I'll get to know Mr. North even better, probably. That's number one. Number two, Jackie, you heard him keep talking about the Gates Foundation. We expect the Gates Foundation. But honestly, Jackie is excellent. I've worked with her for, I guess, over 10 years with WorkNet, and she's been phenomenal and is a great hire. So, thank you, Dr. Law and Dr. ... And finally, the last two quick things are, one is, Mr. Chair, if we could, I would like to look at having a board evaluation process now that we have two new board members. We know where we're headed down the road in a couple of years. We evaluate the talent or the folks that teach our young people on a daily basis. We evaluate our president, but we, I think, need to have some type of board retreat every quarter after one of these meetings to see if we are actually giving them the necessary tools that they need to move down the track. We vote on things, but are we giving staff and Dr. Law the things that they need on a regular basis, quite in line with Mr. Burke, which is talking about, you know, criteria and other things that we have? Do we have all of that information? And can we make an informed decision about what we're voting on? And when we vote on it, is that what they need? So I'd like to, you know, at some point, talk about that and maybe put that in Dr. Law's hands to come back on how we can self-evaluate, but also maybe have a committee that evaluates us as well.
That's, that sounds great, Mr. Gibbons. Dr. Law is already putting the pieces together for that. We're planning a board retreat in December, and perhaps in your comments, Dr. Law, you can address some of that, but I'm sure you'd be happy to integrate some of those fine points into that. That's fine.
Yes, sir. And then finally, I hear that we're making great progress on the Midtown campus, and I'd like, at some point, I don't know if Dr. Law's already talked to the two new board members about where we are in Midtown, but we're making great progress. And I think in the next couple of weeks, you'll see that we'll be way down the road on Midtown.
Okay, beautiful. Okay, and again, for the benefit of our new board members, this section of the agenda is just an opportunity for kind of an open mic, if you will. I don't want to give, or pass by the opportunity. Do you have anything else to add at this point?
No.
Great. Mr. President?
I have, I have two items that I'd like to share. First, many of you saw the announcement, I think we forwarded it, that a good friend and I think a wonderful professional, Mr. Randy Hanna, has been selected as the Chancellor for the Florida College System, will work directly for, for the Education Commissioner. Randy is a, I should fess up, a close personal friend, had, has great background in education, not as a line officer, though. He has been on the board at Florida A&amp;M University, University of West Florida, was a very strong member at Tallahassee Community College before I got there, and then had served on the now deformed State Board of Community Colleges. So he is very immersed in Florida's public policy, very, very well-respected in, in those quarters. I have already spoken with Randy, expect that he will assume, he comes to board November 1st. We will have him visit with us at the earliest possible moment, perhaps working around maybe even our November board meeting. But Randy professionally will be leaving as, he had been the managing partner for Bryant Miller &amp; Olive, one of the premier bond law firms in the state of Florida. Among Randy's many, many talents, he has won 10 cases before the Florida Supreme Court, so he, he knows how to represent ideas in public. Good, good hire there. And then I do want to just, I'm going to pass around, we have upcoming the In-Service Day, and I want you to see the scope of this. It is, somebody tell me the day?
Next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday, all day, on campus at Clearwater. You see the range of opportunities. Many of them are focused directly on individual professional developments, some are a little more on personal development and those kinds of things. It is a day when all employees come together, the President will make three separate presentations to our groups. We're bringing in not one, but two national experts on metrics. We will have the Vice President from Achieving the Dream here, who handles all of the data coaches from across the country, and he will be talking about the kinds of data that people use to move institutions forward. And then we will also be bringing a woman, Arlene Arnsbarger, from the Community College Survey of Student Engagement that we will be presenting here today. And then lastly, just two other things that I want to point out. I'm very proud of my staff, and we shared, we put together a, first, an entry welcome orientation booklet for our two new trustees. You know, how much to give and how to walk people on is always the thing, but we wanted you to feel welcome, at least comfortable at the first blush. And then I'll pass around, we had the wonderful ceremony to recognize our faculty emeritus. We took all of that and made a booklet that we are handing to folks, again, just to raise the level of communication among our staff. Mr. Chairman, I will have some other substantive comments at the end of the, in the President's report at the end.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair. I forgot one thing.
Mr. Gibbons.
I'm sorry. I'd be remiss if I didn't say this. Dr. Law also sent a letter out to Ms. Downing's family. I don't know if you remember, at the Professor Emerita Awards, we gave Al Downing a Professor Emeritus title. She passed away not long after that, and so just wanted the faculty and staff to know that as well.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, uh, agenda item number four, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes of September 20th.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Agenda item five, Mr. Lang?
I have no formal report, it was an inordinately quiet month last month. I do want you to know though, that I will be attending the Florida College Association Foundation Board Meeting, 17th of November.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Gardner?
Mr. Chair, I have no report this month.
Thank you. Dr. Carney?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
Good morning.
Mr. President, members of the board, I'd like to have a special good morning, welcome to Mr. North and to Captain Fine.
Let me set the stage, this is where each of our provosts gets a very short period of time. Did I say a short period of time? To update the board on items of, of their choosing in brief from their campus, so, uh, we will then, uh, and, and we rotate it every three months now, there's about three presentations a month. A very short period of time.
This morning I want to highlight and share with you what about who our students are on the Tarpaulin Springs campus as of opening day for 2017, and I want to share with you about two new and exciting initiatives that we really strengthened this year aimed at strengthening out-of-the-classroom, uh, learning support for our students. Uh, as you see, our enrollment for this year is $5,761, basically flat from the year before. But the thing I want to highlight here are the new students that you see there. Uh, we had, um, 1,227 new students, growing above 6% of the previous year. On the left-hand side you see the Student Services and the ones in white are the ones that are, that form the core of our student intake services, but the ones at the bottom I really want to highlight and accentuate, the Mandatory Orientation and the Integrated Library of Learning Resources. Those two were significantly strengthened this year, uh, as again to, to increase our learning beyond the classroom support to our students. For example, for the first time this year, uh, all of our new students who tested into two or more Developmental Education courses were required to take, um, the, uh, was required to attend this face-to-face Mandatory Orientation. And they walked away from this orientation with a much better understanding of all of the out-of-the-classroom support that was available to them and they were enrolled in not only their Developmental Education courses, but any other courses that they needed for this fall. And one of the, perhaps one of the most important things that we shared in that Mandatory Face-to-Face Orientation was the number of out-of-the-classroom studying hours required for each of the in-classroom teaching and learning hours. And that's one of the things I emphasize, even at the doctoral level of study, how much work it takes out of the classroom as opposed to inside the classroom. The other area we strengthened quite a bit was the Integrated Library and Learning Support. Uh, that is a new model that we're, um, employing here at the college, but it's a trend around the country, where we are integrating the management unit for our library and, uh, learning resource tutoring. And this year we, we redesigned our library and tutoring space, repurposed some space, added a, um, research lab in our library, added a writing studio in our library, and increased the staffing for tutoring, uh, one and a half full-time, uh, one and a half budgeted employees to make a total of five budgeted employees for tutoring, particularly on any area of science, math, chemistry, physics, and those, uh, technical areas. The, uh, the other thing I want to share with you is, uh, the age demographic of our students on the Tarpaulin Springs campus. And Tarpaulin Springs campus has long been known as a campus with, uh, younger student body. And as you see there, if you, the first two categories, the 21 and the 22 to 25, adding those two together, 53% of our students are below the ages of 25, uh, compared to about 44 for the college as a whole. So we have a younger student body. And what I've seen is not only the interest in this type of data on our campus, but also the way that our different constituencies on the campus, faculty, staff, and student, interpret the implication. Our student government president, for example, saw this as a big plus in terms of the younger student body because she saw the students who were more able to dedicate time on campus and participate in the more robust student life and leadership, uh, activities. Our faculty and undergraduates are very aware of the, of the circle, of the characteristic or younger student body and they, through a lunch and learning faculty seminar series, are exchanging best practices and tips on how to manage the classrooms of teaching and learning for a younger student body. The, uh, the last thing I want to share with you in terms of demographics are our largest, uh, ethnicity groups on the campus, we're largely white as you can see there, but also we have a very large, not a very large, but our second-largest ethnicity group are Hispanics. And this month, as you may know, we are celebrating, um, Hispanics and Latino heritage on our campus. Yesterday we had, um, we welcomed about 300 people to our campus together with these Clearwater campus, we honored about 100 students. And so what we're doing is that we're seeing students who excel in academic achievement, we are, uh, encouraging them, we are affirming their, uh, their work, and then when we're seeing students that need out-of-the-classroom support, we are reaching out to them and we are, uh, encouraging them to continue to work hard and advising them of the out-of-classroom support that we have in campus. Mr. Chairman, let me, uh, close by saying that as with Dr. Renard, who has been sharing with this board, uh, every semester, who's here at the St. Pete College, we on the campuses are also beginning to drill down into those Kansas-specific student data and make those evidence-based decision-making that, uh, that Ken talked about a few minutes ago. Uh, it helps us to understand who our students are, uh, and it helps us to better understand the demographics and what their needs are, and most importantly, it helps us to determine how we can best help them to succeed at completing what they start. So, Mr. Chairman, that is my report this morning, I'll be happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you, sir. Questions for Dr. Carney? Mr. Burke?
And since you're at the podium, I'm going to ask you this question, it's really not about the demographics. What is your relationship as provost with the, the Lea Rattner Museum?
I, the director of the Rupert Rattner Museum reports to you.
Reports directly to you?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Dr. Oliver?
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Members of the board, especially the new members, we look forward to having you on our campuses, Dr. Law. Uh, one of the many reasons for St. Petersburg College's success, uh, and reputation in the community is the many partnerships that it's forged over time. The Seminole campus certainly has its share of partnerships and I'd like to share three examples with you this morning. First is with Pinellas County Schools. For 11 years, we've been host to Dixie Hollins High School, uh, offering GED, the Graduate Equivalency Diplomas, on campus. During that time, over a thousand students have earned their GED at SPC Seminole, 131 last year alone. Our advising office works closely with GED staff to connect to graduates, uh, and our admissions and appropriate support staff facilitate their enrollment at St. Petersburg College. We joined away 79 students last year who didn't qualify for the fast-paced criteria of the program, uh, at our sem. So we opened a second location in a conference room in the library this fall and the program is already totally full with a waiting list. And that's the first, um, GED portal, the second photograph in our library. The second partnership is with Pinellas County and the Southwest Florida Water Management District for Swift Mud. We partnered with Swift Mud before, the five large ponds just north of our, uh, major buildings, were part of a million-dollar, uh, project, um, to, uh, purify water, uh, running from the west to Point Seminole. Um, but this much more, much smaller, most, uh, uh, smaller grant, uh, but meaningful grant that I want to talk about today, uh, is to help restore the natural habitat in the northwest corner of the property, 102nd and 113th, uh, by planting various natural species to, uh, revegetate the site. Couple of years back, the, the college received a grant from the Environmental Protection Agency, the State Environmental Protection Agency of $20,000 to remove non-native invasive, uh, species from the site and this latest project will allow us to continue enhancing the property and is particularly special since the grant is secured with matching funds raised by our local community. That's currently the picture of the corner of 102nd and 112nd Avenue, 113th Street, uh, that we expect will be a much, um, more, uh, beautiful place, replaced with native species as part of this grant. The third partnership I'd like to highlight today is with the city of Seminole. And while it's not, uh, received the notoriety that our joint-use library has, the Recreation Center, uh, membership program is very much appreciated on the campus. Uh, if you're not familiar with the geography, the Seminole Recreation Center is, uh, right next to the campus, just to the left, uh, we share the entrance drive with them. Uh, the campus buys 15 annual passes for a total cost of just $800, $1,800 to the Recreation Center. And then those passes are available to any member of the faculty, student, or staff. Last month there were 570 visits to the Rec Center, averaging over 21 visits a day. We're continually looking for new partnership opportunities to apply and effectively provide services and, uh, to enhance programs and facilities on the campus, that's my report.
Thank you, sir. I have a question unrelated to those. What is the status on the Eco Home, the Environmental Green Home? I'm not sure what the title was.
Yes, sir. That, uh, it's the Green Home.
The Green Home, okay.
Susan Wright and her staff are working to, uh, to make that transition. Uh, that was a, a grant, as you know, to the county, uh, Congressman Young.
Right.
Um, we have now, by vote of the county, been granted that Green Home and we're making the transition of the funds. A group of us are going down to the Green Home in Sarasota, uh, beginning of next month and we expect to move forward with that grant, $475,000 grant to build a, a Green Home and a variety of, of environmentally sound, uh, green practices around that site. Uh, that will be a number in the report that you'll be getting later, but that, that's in process.
Do you have an approximate timeline as to when that will all be completed, the actual construction and everything? Any ideas?
I, I do not. We, uh, we're, we're waiting until that paperwork goes through with me, this is the Green Home, it'll be a couple of years.
Great, great. Questions for Dr. Oliver, anyone? Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Rubel?
May I, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Position this, this is, uh, you are present at the creation, uh, Linda Rubel represents our Career Services Employee Council, uh, a creation over the last year, so we have representatives from each of our campuses, the career staff, um, secretarial, gentorial, buildings and grounds and others who, uh, come together, meet with me every month. We, uh, got this up and running and Linda has been here for, uh, years and, um, was selected by her colleagues to be the, uh, founding chair of that group and, and we're delighted. This is her first, uh, report of our council, so I expect everyone will treat her very warmly and nicely, okay?
Well, she's already learned to get maximum use of her slide.
That's right.
Well, congratulations on your selection and your appointment.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
And actually, I came this morning with a whole lot of fancy prepared remarks and decided to take Dr. Law's advice and just tell you things that I wanted to know and the town has already told you half of them. Actually, already been a pretty emotional morning with Dr. Ward's office retirement and I don't mind telling you that this is another emotional occasion for, for me, it's a great honor to be here as the first chairperson of the Career Services Council. I gave you a lot of basic information in that slide, it's really pretty self-explanatory, but, um, I think perhaps to start off this morning, the most important thing is just to give you an idea of who the career service staff are at the college, especially for the benefit of the new board members. We are everywhere. We are custodians, the ground recorders, the staff assistants like myself, academic advisors. Um, we are sort of bones of the institution, as I like to, to put it, sort of the glue that holds everything together. And as you can see from the slide, we're also the largest single group of employees here at the college, so we really make a great impact and I see the chairman sort of cringing at that, wondering if that's true.
No, I'm just trying to read it, actually. I should be looking up here, thank you.
And now, we've all worked individually, we've collaborated in very small groups, probably just on our own campuses, but now, thanks to Dr. Law, um, we have this council that will allow us to make a deeper impact on, um, the college and on our student's college experience. And so in upcoming presentations, I'll be bringing you a lot more detailed information, but this morning is really, um, an introduction to this council and, and to the group and really, really appreciate being here and thank you on behalf of the career staff, Dr. Law.
Thank you. I think it's fantastic that you're here and I, I commend you and congratulate you again. Any questions? Thank you very much. I have a question for Dr. Law. Mr. Burke?
Um, Dr. Law, just something she said surprised me, um, the academic advisors are career employees, is that normal at a, of college?
Um, they could be both career or if you have a professional category, sometimes they, they fall there, it depends upon a lot of the background experience of college. That's not a surprise to me, that would be one end of the spectrum, buildings and grounds along that spectrum.
And yours, was this, I assume, the way we had it structured prior to your coming here?
I have made no changes to any of that, yeah, that's, that's how it has.
And you feel comfortable with that?
I will simply say, I had jumped up on my screen as a problem or something that requires my attention. I expect this part is working fine. Uh, as we continue to focus on how best to serve our students, all of these things will have their day in the sun for review. In fact, can I take one second, uh, for, for all but especially new board members? We are in the middle of a major review of the job scopes and responsibilities for all of our career employees. We have a national, uh, consulting firm doing job evaluations for every position, every employee has filled out a questionnaire, we are waiting those to be sure that the, uh, positions are appropriately scoped, uh, both relative to other positions and then across campuses. And then the third piece will be to be sure that we are competitive in the market, that will be concluded within the next couple of months. So, Mr. Burke, any anomalies like that would come out of the job scoping review that's being undertaken by the consultant.
Is academic advisor and counselor, are those synonymous terms?
I would not use those synonymous. Counselor tends to have a professional or faculty title.
That's what I'm, okay, so these are two different types of.
Yes, yes.
What's the, and I'm just curious, what's, what distinguishes their duties?
Background preparation, nature of the.
The duties to the student, how does the student, why would I go to an academic advisor and then when would I go to a counselor?
Student shouldn't, shouldn't care, it is who puts together the programs, who does the development be away from the student, and that tends to be the counselors, advisors tend to spend most of their time in direct response to students. Counselors have, like most professionals, responsibilities on the front line and in the program development, evaluation and those kinds of things.
Thanks. Okay, on to agenda item 7A, student success and achievement. Dr. Law?
One of the, uh, one of the major initiatives that we undertake periodically, not every year, it doesn't require it to happen every year, is the Community College Survey of Student Engagement. This, uh, this tool is, uh, has been developed, uh, at the University of Texas, hundreds of colleges use it. It gives us, uh, information directly from our students on how they pursue, how they make their way through the institution. We can gather great information about how students are, um, perceiving their education, not an individual faculty member, but their experience at the college. It gives us a way then to compare ourselves both nationally and with, uh, similar, colleges similar to ours. It is information that is vitally important for the faculty to understand the big picture of how their students, uh, are coming to us and changes over time. So we have both a, a local feature and then of course the comparative national and, and similar institutions feature. Like all of our student success, we start with the board today and then we'll, uh, distribute this and have further dialogue with the campuses as we go. Chief Academic Officer, Vice President, Senior Vice President, uh, Dr. Ann Cooper will make the presentation, uh, this one's going to take about 15 or 20 minutes, there's a great deal of information in this report.
Thank you, good morning again. As we know, student engagement or the amount of time that students apply to their educational endeavors is very important to their retention as well as their learning and their success. endeavors is very important to their retention as well as their learning and their success. As Dr. Law has shared, the CSE, as we like to call it, or Community College Survey of Student Engagement, put down by the University of Texas in Boston, allows us to take an assessment or a survey of how our students feel in regards to their engagement in the classroom as well as outside. This assessment was administered to our lower division students in face-to-face and blended classes because it's a paper and pencil assessment, so there's a different assessment that is done for the online students. The group at the University of Texas, we provide them with a list of the classes and then they randomly choose one hundred to one hundred and twenty-five of those sections and then our faculty support us by administering a paper and pencil survey during their class period. We had a thousand and one hundred and sixty-eight respondents and this just gives you a little bit of information about the characteristics of those students. As you can see, thirty-one percent were part-time enrolled, fifty-nine percent female, sixty-three percent eighteen to twenty-four-year-olds, and minority students were thirty-seven percent. Now, when we look at the CSE cohort that we're being compared to, those are all of the colleges that have participated in the CSE over the last three years and those are six hundred and ninety-nine colleges and they're primarily in the United States as well as Canada. Out of the sample of St. Petersburg College respondents, you can see that first generation, seventy percent working students, seventy-six percent working more than thirty hours, thirty-eight percent caring for dependents or caring for dependents more than thirty hours a week. You can also see they are participating in college-sponsored activities and participating in college-sponsored activities, twenty-five hours. Obviously, many of our students are working and caring for others and so their time is limited. The CSE looks at five main benchmarks in regards to the assessment and these are a grouping together of different questions on the survey into five main categories. The first of these, active and collaborative learning, these look at how students are actively involved in thinking about what they're learning and being able to apply that to real-life situations, collaborating with others, and of course, being able to apply those skills to real-life situations. Student effort is the, obviously, the amount of effort that they apply to be successful. Academic challenge, this is looking at the rigor and standards. We want to be sure that our courses are college-level and commensurate with what we might find in colleges and universities around the United States. This looks at the complexity of work that's assigned, the types of examinations or papers that students might write. We also want to look at student and faculty interaction. This obviously is very effective in encouraging students to persevere when they might be having difficulty. Our faculty act as role models and mentors and so it's important for that interaction to not only take place within the classroom but outside as well. And then support for the learner. Students feeling that they have the right support outside the classroom as well as inside the classroom to cultivate not only positive relationships but success and knowing that there is great concern for their success. And this is why we have done, as you heard earlier from Dr. Carney, much more focus on our out-of-classroom support for our students and as our president likes to say, getting them to their classes in the best possible shape for learning. Now, when we look at those five benchmarks for two thousand and eleven and our comparison with other colleges of similar size, and these would be colleges that have fifteen thousand or more students, so we are being compared to other community colleges such as Broward or Palm Beach State College. We find that in these five areas, we are not doing too badly. You can see on the left side, St. Petersburg College results and then on the right side, the comparison colleges.
Dr. Cooper, how many colleges are in that group, do you know?
I don't have that off the top of my head, but you'll find out.
That's okay. Do we, do we know, did they exclude, and I'm not sure about size, you know, it says by size, but did they exclude nationally ones which really aren't similar to us as far as, man, no, like Wisconsin, they're mainly technical schools and South Carolina where really a small minority of their students are seeking an AA degree. Are they?
My understanding is they're community colleges and is primarily based on size.
So, okay.
We have the ability to sort it however you want. It's a database and we can do whatever. The first sort is colleges that look the same, so we're not comparing ourselves to North Florida Community College or Keys Community College, or those that are fifteen thousand or more and this how it works. We have the ability, we get a database that we can sub-sort. Mr. Burke?
I would like to see this then, if we can, just for the colleges in Florida.
Yeah, makes sense. To see how we compare, because.
Sure.
That'd be helpful.
Sure. Obviously, with any data, you always want to do a little deeper and so we wanted to look at the five benchmarks in regards to how St. Petersburg College has fared the last three iterations. We gave the survey in two thousand and four, two thousand and seven, and two thousand and eleven and as you can see, we showed a bit of a dip in two thousand and seven. I think best can be said that at that time, we were focusing on other things, but our new president has brought us back to mission critical and we are back on track. Now, we can look within each of those benchmarks to look at specific statements and to see how we're doing and. And, sorry, I think I skipped a spot. There we go. This is looking in comparison with the cohort again, but it's looking on specific questions within each of the benchmarks. So, for example, on active and collaborative learning, we're looking at students making a class presentation. And as you can see, we're higher than the CSE cohort. If we look within the benchmark of student efforts, we're on a paper project that required integrating ideas or information from various sources, again, to be fared above the cohort. Student and faculty interaction, using email to communicate. Academic challenge, applying theories or concepts to practical problems in a number of written papers or reports. Again, on all of these, we have fared well in comparison to the cohort and I believe this is a true testament to the wonderful job that our faculty do every day in the We then have the two thousand and four, two thousand and seven, and two thousand and eleven results on those same areas of engagements and again, you see that we are continuing But obviously, there are things that we have scored high on and then we also want to look at those things that we have scored low on because these are the areas that then we can focus on to make improvement. So when we look at the areas in comparison with the cohort, where we have not scored as high, in active and collaborative learning, work with other students on projects during a class, student effort, talked about career plans with an instructor or an advisor, student and faculty interaction, work with instructors on activities other than coursework, academic challenge, helping you cope with non-academic responsibilities or frequency in visiting the computer lab. And we see this is all part of the college experience and particularly out-of-classroom support and Dr. Williams and our provost are focused on looking at that whole area on each of our campuses and looking for ways in which we can improve. Again, if we look at these areas of student engagement and relationship to how the college itself did in two thousand and four, and seven, and eleven, these are still areas where we can continue to make improvement. Now, we wanted to also, in not just look at high-low in comparison to the cohort, but just look at where within St. Petersburg College, we were high and low within each of the five benchmarks. So on active and collaborative learning, asking questions or contributing to a class, sixty-five percent, but then participating in a community-based project is why the regular support was where we were low. This is why we are focusing on service learning, which our honors college and some of our clubs are involved in, and broadening that perspective college-wide. On student effort during the current year, looking at whether students worked on a project, very high, used peer or other tutoring services, obviously are low or lower and this is where we are focused on the out-of-classroom support and encouraging study groups with students and providing them with the environment where they can go within our libraries and have that opportunity to study together. Academic challenge, obviously, work harder than they thought they would, fifty-six percent said very often, work with a classmate outside of class to prepare for class assignments, were lower.
Dr. Cooper?
Yes?
Just so you know, I met with a person who was an adjunct for us some time ago and some of these, I think we probably did better before, way before I got here because he actually was my vice principal in middle school. He was talking about how the, exactly what you were talking about, there were fraternities, sororities. He actually joined his fraternity here on campus and made lifelong friends here and so on. He was able to be active, more active in the community as well as learning communities. And I think, I think you guys are headed in the right direction, you and Dr. Williams on that. Thank you, Dr. Law.
Then when we look at student and faculty interaction, using email to get an instructor, obviously students are using the technology, work with an instructor on a class, other than coursework, of course, is lower and one that we want to focus on and encourage our instructors to spend time in the learning support centers, being involved as advisors for clubs and many of them do, but we feel that we can strengthen that as well. Support for the learners, provide support that they need to succeed in college, so the odds set very much or quite bit, whereas twenty-three percent on helping you cope with non-academic responsibilities was lower. And we have some programs such as Women on the Way, the male outreach initiative, that is attempting to look at some of those aspects. Within each of the CSE surveys, every year, the center has special focus items that they add to the assessment and as you can see here, one had to do with students being registered before the first day of class and ninety-three percent of our respondents were registered for all their courses before the first class session. And then looking at online orientation as well as being aware that there's an orientation, you can see that there's room for improvement there and that's why, as Dr. Carney shared, we are looking at mandatory orientation face-to-face, particularly for those students in developed courses and then looking to expand that in a not-too-gifted way.
Okay. Mr. Burke?
Dr. Cooper, the nine point seven percent of the students who are not all registered for their courses, what the heck does that mean?
Well, Jesse, am I correct that if we look at the total student population and we took nine percent?
Yes, yes.
Extrapolating that way?
Students that were, you know, waited till the, actually, the first week of class to start or we have express sessions, they may not necessarily have done it right at the beginning of the session.
Right, but with thirty-four thousand students, that could be as many as over three thousand students that are.
And the reason I ask that question is because we were told before that the students who register like that, that's a great indicator of students' failure in the course. So I guess, you know, what do we do with that problem or what does Dr. Law and your staff do with that problem is something that I hope is a follow-up to this report.
Well, Mr. Burke, yeah, I'm concerned about the nine point seven percent. Low-performing colleges, those numbers would be in the fifty to sixty percent range, okay? So, so we're, we're way in front and of course, the fixes that we've made to financial aid have been a big part of getting everybody registered at the right time. One of the things I love about CSE though is you can go in and see who's not in, who's in which group and what could we be doing more. We found that for some of our, particularly African-American males, all of the details were not taken care of by the first day of class and then surprisingly, they don't succeed at the same level, so we've already.
Not surprisingly.
Yeah. Come at, come at that from a different way. Ninety percent's a pretty good number, but you're right. This is a key indicator of students have been counseled appropriately, we have the right courses, we're not jerking them around, canceling them, asking them to reregister, we're not encouraging people to wander into courses after the first day. I mean, some of it is, we'll see how high we can get. Ninety percent's a good number.
Dr. Law, haven't we also already moved to the mandatory orientation?
Well, mandatory orientation, we, we did a pilot project and we'll get to the report next month. I haven't seen it yet. Eighteen hundred students, anyone who tested into two remedial courses had to be part of a required, the mandatory orientation face-to-face and they had to be in a student support, a learning support course. So those two things happened. We are on track to continue to expand the mandatory orientation. I think it's one of the key factors for student success. No business, no company, no service, with an enduring relationship would not take time to be sure that the initial engagement is fundamentally sound.
Terry?
Dr. Law, I know, I know this is not direct on here, but since you've just mentioned it and I thought we talked about it at prior board meetings and I'm not sure where it's heading and I, we certainly hear it the national front, is that the, obviously, the remediation problem is a tremendous problem and they, I guess, the evidence-based solutions, they say, is more targeted remediation rather than you failed the test, therefore, we're going to sign you up for a whole semester. If your problem is certain type of, if math, why, you know, why shouldn't we just target the, a four-week course on, on that type of math and so it's, it's less imposing to the student that they have to take a whole semester? Sixty percent or seventy percent, they already know, it's just that thirty percent they need to help in and apparently, these diagnostic tests can tell us the thirty percent they need to help on and we can focus on that thirty percent. Have we started moving in that direction?
Yes, sir. We have, we had a very encouraging pilot project where we allowed students to, there was a lot more flexibility in the diagnosis of student needs and then moving them to remediate specific targeted needs so that they could move through the remediation sequences faster. That is where the promised land is and you're right, that's where the most encouraging kinds of initiatives to, to take a big bite out of remedial education are. Having said that, I have a meeting scheduled with our deans to review that pilot, to see how we can scale it up, to see what works. You hear just a little caution in my voice, it would be great if we could get some help from the legislatures. You know, as soon as we try to help a student, they'll say, they have to be registered in a course. Now you're back to, what we want to do is bring them in, let them remediate, then test through. We can figure out how to get them, how to pay for it, but we can't do it under the old metrics, okay? So we've got some.
So there's no funding for a, an abbreviated course?
Yeah, no, well, we've worked around it on a, on a pilot basis, but we couldn't, we're not in a position to scale it up. Secondly, of course, the financial aid people, your financial aid is best based on how many credits you're signed up for. So, so these initiatives that say, bring people in, let them diagnose, work through the problem for a while, take some ownership and then move through, very successful, they don't fit the bureaucratic administrative constraints that we find ourselves with. We haven't rolled up our sleeves to try to fix that yet, but we're, we're on it.
Is this something the college president, council president is kind of addressing and legislative solution to possibly?
I'll have to dig in and see. It has not come through the council of presidents yet, okay? So, so there may be models out there where people have already figured out how to work around some of the constraints. I'm not aware of those yet.
Because that'd be a shame if the bureaucratic mess is holding up potential success here.
We're kind of new to what we want to do, so I wouldn't fuss too loudly yet. We may not have asked for the flexibility yet, but it's coming. It's, those are the most successful models we see. If you ask the Gates Foundation as to what they have learned to help students get through remediation. remediation, it is, do just this. Don't leave people stuck in three or four levels of remediation. They never get out of remediation if that's the case. In fact, I will share with the board a very interesting article that Kathleen Kennedy sent me that said, if you really were smart, don't worry about studying, brushing up for the ACT or the SAT, make sure you know what your local college is doing for college entrance. We used a test, we will use a test called PERC, because if you test really low there and you get stuck in the lowest levels of remediation, you never make it out. If you were to brush up before you take the test, reinvigorate on the things you learned fifteen or twenty years ago, as I always say, I learned set theory, and I'm not sure I could test on it this afternoon, okay? But brush up, get focused on your immediate needs, and then take the test, you might only need one semester of math remediation, and your chances of ultimate success go sky-high, multiples of getting stuck in the third level.
Mr. Gibbons?
Dr. Law, to your point, on my tour of the campuses, that was one of the things that came up, and it seems like that pilot that we're running is very successful in getting folks out of their mediation before the semester is out. So, it's like a four to six-week window there where they're learning the things and they retest, right? Am I correct in that?
Dean Mark Campbell and Dean Sharon Griggs did a great job with that pilot. I asked them to make an appointment to come see me. I want to revisit it, see what the details were. They made a presentation, I think, at the sport, if I'm not mistaken, back in the late spring. I'd like to get that lined up for a budget initiative next year if it looks like it has scalability. We need to do more than just a pilot.
I ask one last question. Is this, is this something that we could possibly do over the summer to prepare young people or prepare students before the semester starts?
That's my real goal, is to provide support. You know, it's one thing to think of kids who just graduated high school in May or June. I really worry about the returning mom who's been out of school for fifteen years, and she may not have gotten it when she was in school in the nineties. But if we could give her some brush up with targeted learning, make sure the things that she learned, she can recall and renew that learning, and then take the test, I think she'll do better and will do better. She'll spend less time in remediation, feel much more supported. We ought to do that in July before we ask people to take the test. We ought to give them a chance to relearn some things before we test them. Sorry.
That's okay. I can share with you that there were seventy-six extra-large columns in that cohort, and we will do a comparison of the colleges for you. St. Petersburg College also had a number of.
What was that number? I'm sorry. Seventy-six. Thanks.
These were primarily to do with critical thinking, whether students were able to understand another's perspective that influenced their own thinking, whether they were willing to consider different ideas, look at things from different perspectives. And we show progress on each of those. The one that, of course, we are focusing on is the outside-of-classroom support in regards to tutoring and academic assistance, and we note that this is an area for improvement, and we are focused on that at this time. Two other areas that the survey looks at are the students' aspirations as well as barriers to their persistence. And when we look at our support students, we see that ninety-three percent of them are here to obtain an associate's degree, seventy-seven to transfer to a four-year college, sixty-seven percent to obtain job-related skills, seventy-three for self-improvement, forty-seven to change careers. And then we see those that that's not a goal. As far as the barriers to students persisting, we think what's interesting here is that it's not that they're academically prepared, but it's finances and working full-time seem to be a big factor, as well as caring for dependents. So, we know there's much that our students are having to be concerned about, and that obviously, they have been their ability to learn and their focus on education.
I wonder how much different this looks now, Dr. Law, since we've made those changes to financial aid?
I don't know. We surveyed last spring for this. This was in March or April of last year. Was that when the test, when we actually did the survey? Yeah, about that time. I think the problems are still growing, though. I think students are living close to the edge financially. I think care for dependents is not something that's going away in the kind of economic hard times we're in. I think we ought to assume these are conditions on the ground that we have to address.
Dr. Law, how does a student identify their goal to us?
Let me be sure I understand exactly how. I know on the intake process, we do that, I don't know how they do it. Jesse, what's the answer?
For purposes of that survey, I was just questioning, they just select either a primary or secondary goal. I don't know that we have a specific way that we tie individual goals specifically with students at this point in our ongoing campaign.
I just get concerned because that's how we're measured, is once a student identifies what their goal is, and a lot of times, they don't know the meaning of that goal. I don't mean to sound, you know, but when you say, well, you want to transfer, seventy-seven percent of our students said they want to transfer, we tell them, well, these are the sixty hours you need, and this is the commitment you need to make that happen. Oh, is that your goal? I mean, you know, I have a goal of, you know, being muscular and having a flat stomach, then you tell me I have to go to the gym five days a week and do all this, well, maybe that's not my goal. You know? You know, but seriously, our students, they show this, that, you know, we just ask these questions without the student knowing the full impact of what they're deciding here, and then we take these measurements, and that's how we're measured nationally on our student completion, our success, and what they're going to continue. I mean, we just went through interviews with the governor who asked us about outcome-based funding.
Very much so.
Not just because you sign up for credit hours, but because of the success of our students. And so, these numbers are going to mean a heck of a lot more in outcome-based, or whatever you want to call it, there's synonymous terms for that, but performance-based funding. You know, if we're going to be measured against these types of things, I think the process of helping the student determine what they're here for is so important.
Right. That we're very much focused on with our new Student Life Plan Committee, which is a college-wide committee that is looking at those kinds of aspects, as well as Dr. Williams and our provost working on a student educational plan or learning plan, and making sure that they understand, first of all, what they're committing themselves to, that they have a goal, because we know that they're more likely to succeed if they have a goal, but that they understand the ins and outs of setting that goal, and then what are the things that they need to do to be able to succeed, and are giving whatever support we have to provide for that.
To piggyback on that, Dr. Cooper, which was a long time ago, when I was in college, I guess, everybody had an appointment to meet with at the academic council to talk through where you were headed. Do we do that? We give everybody an appointment, now if they choose not to come, that's something different. But do we give, I mean, I think we got emailed our appointments, and if we missed it, you know, that was on you. But we got emailed the appointment, and then we got counseled on where you were trying to go, and like, what was your ultimate goal in life, and here, you know, here's what you're saying you want to do.
Right. We do not do that yet, but we are looking at what changes we need to make and provide for that. Now, some of that is occurring within our college success skills courses, mentoring, but that's not all of our students. And we recognize that there is a need to be more specific in helping the students to make good decisions.
Well, with, I guess, that's important, because if I'm looking at these graphs correctly, the lack of finances and working are two very, two critical things. You know, neither one of them are, those issues, I think, are going to go away. I think Dr. Law is right about that. So, if that's the case, then there may be other services that these students may need to tap into to be successful going forward. So, maybe that's something that we can look into.
Dr. Law, can I ask a question? What percentage of St. Peter College students are on some form of financial assistance or grant?
About two, I'm sorry, about two-thirds of our students receive some form of financial assistance, about sixty-five percent.
And do you know what the national average is right now?
I don't know. I don't know. Now, let's get a good number for what that looks like. I would, again, this college has made great strides in that, and it's an important piece of our continued growth and development. Let me get some good numbers as to what that looks like.
Mr. Gibbons?
Oh, I did. Dr. Law, do you find the seventy-seven percent want to leave, to be, use this as a launching ground to go to another university high?
Well, it's a good number. It is the way that Florida developed. You hear me stutter a little bit. I came from an institution where that number was darn near a hundred percent. Okay? People came to my former place.
But this is a four-year school.
Yeah, right. Now, I think that's, you know, our relationship with the University of South Florida is, has been historically strong, so a lot of students still see that as a place to go. Many more majors, many more opportunities than, you know, we have a narrow range of those kinds of things. Certainly, if you wanted to be an anthropologist, you'd have to go over to USF.
No, why would you say that? It's a big one. Anyone.
And we want to make sure students have that opportunity. I'm being frivolous, and I don't mean to. Now, as long as students see themselves, we'll get, if your goal is to be a high school teacher, or, excuse me, a teacher, then we have something real good for you. If it is to be a nurse, that works for us as well. If it is indeed to go on to be, to get a degree in political science or some of the, something else, then we do need a partner. So, seventy-seven percent sounds like a pretty good number to me. I haven't, I've not dissected that at all, though.
But again, getting back to that, if you're here and you're all in an AS program, and then you say you're going to transfer to a four-year institution, well, an AS tends to be a terminal degree, although we've kind of changed the language on that. I think, again, that's helping students determine, really, is that what you want to do? Is, and then are you in the right program to get you there, is the question, too.
Okay. The center provides several strategies to promote learning that matters, and we're going to look at sampling a number of these strategies within the results St. Petersburg College came up with for our survey. So, the first is strengthening classroom engagement, and this is raising students' expectations. Students who work hard to meet instructors' expectations, fifty-six, almost fifty-seven percent thought that they did. Thirty-eight percent said that they spent five or two hours to be preparing for class. So, that's an area for looking further into what we might do to promote engagement. Promote active and engaged learners. This is looking at working with classmates outside of class to prepare for assignments, and working with other students on projects, and making a class presentation. So, there's information for us to share with our faculty in regards to areas that we might want to expand upon. Ensuring that students know where they stand, that they're given appropriate feedback, and I apologize, that dark one's thirty-four percent, and you can't read the full site of the report. So, instructors are giving regular feedback, and obviously, this helps the student keep on track, know where they stand, know where they need to improve. But this is also an area where we want to expand upon by using an early alert system. So, students that we know are at risk from the get-go, we can keep track and provide them with preventive strategies from the beginning, rather than waiting till it's too late. Now, there is integrating student support into the learning experiences. This is very interesting. If we look at the importance of the services, students obviously feel that academic advice and planning is very important, but when they were asked how often they use those services, obviously, we see a low percentage. So, we want to encourage a different approach in that regard, and help all of the students see these as areas in which we can improve upon, not only students' access to the services, but their use of the services and benefiting from them. Focusing institutional policies on creating the conditions for learning, looking at the attendance of students and whether they are in class or whether they've been skipping classes, this is telling them well. And we encourage, obviously, students to be in class, but we know that sometimes there are standing waiting circumstances, and then they may also be. Expanding professional development focused on engaging students. Our Center of Excellence for Teaching and Learning is into its, starting into its second year. This is offering ongoing professional development sessions for our full-time and part-time faculty. We've also expanded our SVE funding this year. Faculty have fifteen hundred dollars over a two-year period to spend on their professional development. As the president shared earlier, we have the All College Day, and so, there is an increased emphasis on all our responsibility for student success and education.
Questions? It's a lot of information.
Great information.
Yes, yes. Thank you, Dr. Cooper. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, I'm really, you know, this helps us a great deal. One of the reasons I like the CSEI report is it gives data and feedback in a form that helps you suggest activities to address the deficiencies. It's not arcane, and everybody can invest in that. I think you would expect in our workshop, our strategic planning workshop in December, and then subsequently, in our budget development process in the spring, that the results of these kinds of things would start to show up as budget priorities. If we have shortcomings, then we need to mobilize the resources to address those, realign the existing priorities, and move those forward. We'd be working very carefully with, again, the faculty. They own the issue. If twenty-five percent of the students never made a presentation in class, I think that's a good dialogue to say, what does it take to change that number? And is that a benefit? Is that a value? So, I think this is good stuff, and it doesn't go on a shelf. We use this for our strategic environments.
Mr. Burke? The December workshop, is that going to be the day of our board meeting? Is it going to be an all-day thing? Is that, are the?
We can talk about that later. I didn't intend for it to be all day. I think we're going to try to devote a morning to the strategic planning.
But that's different from our.
No, no, on the day of the board event. That's what the chairman and I had discussed. I don't think we.
I just wanted to make sure it's just for calendar purposes.
No, 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 just, it's on your calendar, it's that day.
Okay.
And I appreciate the follow-up, Dr. Law, on this. I know you're a data guy, and I know that whole program of our budgeting, and I guess some people didn't appreciate that our budgeting process is a multi-month process, and this in December really kicks off the budget process for this coming year, because this is where we lay out our priorities. And then you respond to them with the budget development, and we're included in the process throughout. So, we certainly appreciate, for the benefit of the new board members, that's really the time where we give our input for the budget development, is during the strategic planning workshop. And Dr. Law does a great job about making sure the priorities of the budget focus in what the board focused in on. Last year, for example, we beefed up student support services. That was a keen interest of this board, and the budget reflected those, that commitment to student support services.
Thank you, Mr. Burke. Okay, no action required on that, and no action on seven B. Are there any questions on seven B? Hearing none, we'll move down to Agenda Item seven D.
Move approval of Item seven D, E, F, and G.
Discussion. Is there anything, Dr. Law, on DA? Move approval of Item 7D, E, F, and G.
Okay, discussion. Is there anything, Dr. Law, on DA?
Yeah, good.
That you would like to touch on? I'd like a little more information on that, please.
The Able Trust is one of the significant foundations in Florida, and they provide a variety of services for students with disabilities. They approached us, in fact, to solicit a request for a proposal from us, and we expect that we're going to hear any day. I'm very optimistic about this, but I'm answering right. Wonderful. The Able Trust is, yeah, okay. Working to be sure that, again, students all along are appropriately counseled for the nature of where they are headed, the ability that they will have to meet those needs, what kinds of support that has to happen for students with disabilities to move forward. They value the work that colleges like ours do, and they were surprised that we had not applied previously, so this came as an invitation.
How will we measure success on that, Graham? Because this is per student, I think it comes out to like $8,000 per student. It's a expensive item.
The metric that they have provided, which was it only had to make sure that 30 students were successful, we thought was a very low standard. I mean, we, if we were.
Oh, so there's more students than the 30?
Yeah, that's, that was the minimum metric that they had proposed. They would not entertain proposals that were less than that. We think that we're creating a system that can help many more students than that, Mr. Burke, especially as we then own it as it goes forward.
I was confused in reading, and I thought it just pertained to 30 students.
No, no, no.
Any other questions on DA from board members? Any questions on DB or C? Okay, moving into E1. Questions? Or E2? Ms. Ryder, is there anything that you need to offer to us on E3?
Now, this is just our regular acceptance of this project. These were the classrooms and science labs at the downtown center that we completed over the summer so that we can have them available for the start of classes in August.
Okay.
What matters, this is Susan Ryder. She is Vice President for Facilities Planning and Institutional Services, leads all of our construction and buildings.
She's superwoman.
Yeah, doesn't. Monthly, she has some good news for us. This project is completed, so she's fine.
Great, thank you. She's going to break our heart in another year, so.
Okay. Continuing on through the agenda, then, on the motion that's on the floor. We're down to G1. Any questions, board members? Okay, G2. We have a financial report. Dr. Duckin?
Yes, good morning.
Good morning.
Dr. Law. Won't come as a surprise to you that we are in a good financial position at the end of our first quarter. At the close of our first quarter, our revenue and expense financials are consistent with our trending model. And I want to, normally, we don't show the whole year, but I wanted to just point out for our new board members that we created trend lines from our prior spending patterns over the last five years to give an indication of where we predict we will be at any given point on revenue and expense. And you can see the red line, I think the purple line, they're kind of mixing it with blue, but both of our trend lines are pretty much right on and have been for the last couple of years. If we see any major deviation in that line, then it would be either an indication that there is an issue we need to look at, or where there may be some specific explanation for a major deviation. You have a copy of the detailed report in your packet. At this time last year, our revenue over expense surplus was about 11.2 million, and this year, we're compared to about 10.1 million at the end of our first quarter. Several factors for that. One is that we took a fairly conservative approach to our tuition. This year, we did a 3% at the beginning, in the fall, and then another 3%. So that has a little impact on the revenue piece. I think otherwise, we're very close to where our revenue projections would be. Our budgeted revenue is up 2%, about $900,000, primarily due to increase in tuition and fee. Our total operating expense, since we're at the 25% point of our year, is that I point out that the total operating expense is at 23% of our budget. At 22.9, you see it at the bottom there. And our expenses are up about $2 million over last year, primarily the pay increases, the additional student support services that Mr. Burke mentioned a minute ago. Those are probably the main areas. Some, we've seen some increase in the educational materials and supplies. We did a lot of earlier preparation for fall, so we've seen a little increase in expense there. Other than that, I'd be happy to answer any questions about, regarding the detail.
Questions? Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. Dr. Law, do you need to speak to the bookstore management services?
Yes, I just, and I did have occasion to meet with our new trustees individually to share with them. We bid bookstore services periodically. If I knew, I've forgotten how long Follett has had the contract here. Follett is, of course, a major national player with holdings in probably across the country. The relationship here has, at times, been strained. It has either worked very well or worked poorly, depending upon any given year, any given issue. We've had some very difficult days in times past regarding some specific wording within prior contracts and those sorts of things. I got here, there's a bad taste in everybody's mouth regarding how that was resolved. That's all I can tell you, is I've heard all the story. Follett will bid on this project. There's only going to be two or three companies big enough to bid on ours, so I want to be careful that we don't rule anybody out. But I don't think that, given all the background and experience this institution's had with Follett, that I'm, if I bring a recommendation that is Follett, I need to have done some additional due diligence. And toward that end, I have acquired consulting services to, one, be sure that we are scoping the bid correctly, that we are mindful of all of what's happening nationally as the bookstore industry changes to try to adopt to more electronic versions. Three, that we are writing the language in the most advantageous way for us, and more particularly for our students. And then, four, they can help us assess the bids. They rarely come in apples to apples to apples. You try to set it up that way, there are values associated with different parts of their contract. So we will bring you a recommendation in the spring. We will begin the process of a request for a proposal process, but I did want everybody to understand, all the cards are face-up. Whatever the history is, it's just that history. We're going to move forward as to a new industry, new president, new opportunities, whatever it is. You'll get my best recommendation based on those criteria.
Is this the first time that we have hired a consultant to guide this process for us?
I don't know. I think the answer is yes.
Great. Mr. Burke?
I certainly applaud this approach of hiring the consultant, because this is an item of great concern to our students, the bookstore. The only part in the memo, and you used the exact same words that were in the memo, strained relationship. I had to admit, I was kind of surprised by those words. I knew we had disagreements on contracts, but I didn't realize, was there bad faith on the part of Follett in dealing with them over the past several years? Because I didn't, I never picked up on that. I just picked up on, they interpret contract one way, we did on, at times, and, I mean, that's not unusual in contractual relationships. But, you know, vendors should have a good working relationship with the entity that hires them or uses their services, and I was surprised that we felt a, that they have not been a good player in dealing with us.
You know, would that have were just as simple to describe as you've laid out, okay? That there were some contractual differences. There were some personnel matters that were confounding that issue to this day, I might add. You know, there are people alleging certain things that have been adjudicated, resolved, resolved in every formal, every forum that's available for those sorts of things. I can't sort it all out, Mr. Burke. I cannot sort it all out. There are people at the college who, to this day, think that Follett acted in bad faith with the contract execution. There are, that has not, every time it's been tested in any sort of forum away from the college, that has not been the case. I don't want to bring all that forward. I simply want to say, okay, you know, let's not do that. It's.
It's hard to deal, do business, though, with someone you don't feel is dealing in good faith. I mean, that's my.
Yeah, I did not say that. I don't know that, okay? I don't know if that's the case or not, okay? I have dealt with Follett in every other situation I've ever been with. Hard negotiators, as am I. I love doing the negotiations, because then when you come through it, everyone's fine. You know, Barnes and Noble folded their tent, so there's one less player on the field for all of us. I just, I don't want that to be the dialogue. I want to focus on a changed industry. The biggest player either has or has not made the changes that benefit our students. There are dollars and cents associated that we get. Let me help everybody. Whoever has our contract is going to make money. We're a big client with great attractiveness. That doesn't hurt my feelings at all. I want the best deal for my students at the same time, and then we'll line up what the best deal looks like. Electronic books, rental textbooks, lower costs, better services, whatever those kinds of things are.
Have any colleges just done away with bookstores completely because of the online ordering and so forth?
No, we're not, we're not at that point yet, but that's, trust me, this will be the last time we negotiate a contract that's essentially a brick-and-mortar contract. But the industry is not at that point yet. It is not at that point yet. I don't know how Western Governors does it. I know some of the online places, St. Leo's, I looked at theirs. They had figured out how to deliver textbooks to people remotely. They hadn't figured out how to lower the costs in every case to do that. So if you'll give me a chance to work on it, I'll give it my best. It is not an easy contract, because there are big dollars associated with textbooks and learning materials.
Just, I know in the state that we often rely on other people's contracts. This is not a situation where we can do something like that. I mean, we have other colleges of very like size compared to us, in Hillsborough, Valencia, and Palm Beach, and Broward, and FJ's, whatever it's called up in Jacksonville now. You know, they do, how many of them are in the Follett users already?
I don't know. You know, and maybe back with the recommendation that says we'll buy it off somebody else's contract. We still have to do our due diligence as to what's important to us. How does that, how does that all work? I have not tried to figure out how to piggyback off someone else's contract yet. We're in the process of saying, what do we need to do? What makes sense to us? What are the services? What, given the chance to bid it, what do we want to write down? Let's do that, and then we can put it through a filter. I need help to be sure we're writing down the right things.
This is something that I know I don't need to say, but I'm going to say it. As a community representative in the community, it's still one of the most talked-about items I hear from parents that come to me and go, textbooks! You know, it's just like, it's crazy. And, you know, we had this great assessment and the financial part of why they're not coming to school. I mean, it's more than just the tuition. The textbooks are a big part of that. And you know all that. I just, I would be remiss if I didn't say it.
They, you know, I'm candid. They have everything but a mask and a gun. I cannot tell you where the money goes when we charge $200 for a textbook. I don't get it. I don't get it. But I will.
All right, thank you. Okay, we have before us a motion and a second to approve Items D, F, and G. We have the motion, a second. Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman, with guidance from one of my newer trustees, I do want to point out Item 3C, if you would. Significant reductions in the per-class costs for our students, which is the result of a better plan to have a more uniform technology fee. So we, it's a little bit of a substitution, but it really makes life much better for us to try to grow these programs, support these students, and to have everybody understand the cost of going to college. We've kept that as low as we possibly can. This, I'm very proud of my staff for bringing this recommendation forward.
Excellent. Terry?
Mr. Burke?
Since you brought that topic up, that memo, and the board memo, was so superbly done. I mean, it answered every question I could possibly ask on that, on that matter. I mean, it provided so much information, and that style of presentation was so helpful for the board, at least for this board member. I just want to compliment you, because I know that was a heck of a lot of work to do for us to understand why we were doing that, and you provided all the information in such an easy manner.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We are now moving to Agenda Item H, the public hearing, which I will open at this point for numerous changes to the Board of Trustees Rules Manual. Dr. Law, is there anything that you want to speak to on any of these items at this point?
No, sir, just to reaffirm to everyone, and we actually are prepared to show you the website. We are, we are following state statute. We, in the end, it's always a state statute to tell us what to do, okay? Each agency shall review its rules as necessary. It shall perform a formal review every two years. I was unable to find the last review. Clarify and correct efficiencies. Clarify and simplify rules. Delete obsolete, unnecessary details. Delete rules that are redundant of statute. So you see a great number of those kinds of things. That's part one. Part two is anything that lends itself to a more procedural rather than board rule has been moved to the procedures manual with your choice, with your vote. There are no, we're going to get this cleaned up. We're two or three months more in this, but we're going to get a viable procedures manual and a clean and easy-to-understand Board of Trustees Rules Manual.
Mr. Burke?
I'll go ahead and make the motion, but I have some questions. I move that we approve item, all of Item H.
Second. Go ahead.
And really, this was hard reading, this stuff. I have to admit, this is, this is not the most scintillating stuff to read. But I had a question on, and Mr. Lang, I'm going to ask your help, too, on Rule 6HX23-1.11, Requirements Rule Making. Can you tell us what that is actually doing? Because I had a hard time understanding it.
I understand it, and I'm reading it from an attorney's point of view, not an accountant's point, so. I think that this is saying that we have too many rules that are actually procedural in nature, as opposed to being policymaking rules. And policymaking rules, I think, in the first step that the president referred to, are basically covered by statute in many cases. I think you're going to see your Rules Manual get substantially thinner, relying on, one, the Florida statutes, which already does it, and you can't override that anyway, and, two, on your Procedures Manual, which will supplement what's here.
I guess my concern, and when we look at rules, we take personalities out of it. So I have no doubt, Dr. Law, you would always do the right thing for us. That goes without question here. But I've seen in the state of Florida, two instances in this past year where presidents did things which their board had no idea what the heck was going on at the college. And one, the president was dismissed or resigned or whatever as a result of the action. The other, the president's still there, but the board certainly looks foolish, and was written up in the Chronicle of Higher Education. So I kind of like, like look at these rules as saying, are we making sure the board's protected here on some of these things, too? And as I read it, like on Rule 6HX23-1.31, the accreditation, that we have nothing, this change would mean that there is no requirement for the president to inform the board if our accreditation is in jeopardy at all. And that concerns me. It, I think, as a board member, and if we have any accreditation issues, I think it's, it has to be required that the president report to us. Now, I know Dr. Law will, but I don't want to rely on personalities here. I think the rules should protect us here. So I'm, and I guess we're turning some of these. So I'm, and I guess we're turning some of these policies over, but we're not going to, then the policies which are adopted, how does the board, when the president changed policies, is there any requirement for him to inform the board of change of policies that are under his domain? And could there be a board rule that the board must be notified of perceived policy changes that are under the authority of the president? So that we have at least a requirement on the president to inform us whenever there is, there are policy changes, which is, I know you go through a process, too, in the Procedures Manual. And also, though, with the accreditation, I think there needs to be some type of board rule that, that the board should be informed with any of our accreditation, you know, at all times. I mean, that's, that's a, and any concerns that, it shouldn't even be put in the negative. It should be put, we should be, it's a requirement of the president to keep the board informed because that's one of the most important things that, you know, is the accreditation of the, of the college. And, and we have a college in the state of Florida, I think the largest in the state, which is having an accreditation issue right now. You know, I certainly wouldn't, as a board member, want to have to read it in the paper or find out from a third party, or, you know, I think it needs to be a requirement for the president to keep the board informed on that particular issue. So that's where my concern, it's not, it's not the spirit of what we're doing here. It's, it's just protecting the board, and do all these changes protect the board and the concerns which I mentioned?
I understand. I think the, interestingly enough, the accreditation issue is probably the one that caught my eye the most also. I think you can answer that with your own question that you asked. I think the board can adopt a rule that basically does state that you'll be advised of any challenge to our accreditation.
Could, Ms. Gardner, would you consider putting that forward in the, you know, developing or, if, if the board, I mean, I don't want to do anything that my fellow board members are against, but put something, and I just don't want it in the negative. I think the, the, obviously in jeopardy, but also just the current status, you know, the ongoing status of our accreditation. Because it seems like accreditation's happening all the time now. It used to happen once every 10 years. Dr. Law, I certainly would, you know, don't want to do anything that's contrary to what you're thinking is on this also.
Mr. Lang, do you think, as board counsel, would that be a recommendation?
I think to answer the concern, it would be a recommendation. I hear, Mr. Burke, and know that in both of the cases that he's talking about, there were rules and policies in place that were violated and were not reported. So I don't think that it's necessary, from a governance point of view, to have much of that in here. I think the accreditation one is one that hit me as being something that probably ought to have an affirmative statement in the rules. But as a generality, I read every one of these changes, and I felt that in most of the cases, they were duplicative of statute. In those that they weren't, they basically were things that should have been procedure rather than, than rule. So I was very comfortable with the bulk of what's here. And as I say, it's interesting, can happen to hit on the one that, that I had some trouble with.
Mr. Burke, are you comfortable with a change in the accreditation item?
Not a change, just if we can...
We can make that change.
What are the appropriate way of handling it?
Yes, we can add that change.
I'm following. Concerns, questions, other board members?
Well, I just want to make sure I understand. What you're actually saying is he's going to communicate, Dr. Law will communicate with us about changes in accreditation status. Is that correct? So this whole process still will be moved over to procedural?
Yes.
Are we allowed to change that here, or do you have to re-advertise it or re-bring it to us? Should we vote on that one here today, or are we allowed to do that today?
I believe it would have to be advertised, but we can bring it back, and that change can be made.
Can you bring it back to us next month?
Yes.
No, 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 that's, I'm going to make a point. It can't come next month. It has to go through the entire rulemaking process. This is a perfect example of what the problem that we're trying to solve is. Again, I'm with you 100%. I'm, I'm there. So now, here's what happens. To create a new rule, Suzanne, tell us how long it will take before it can get back to the board?
Two months.
Fifty-six days at a minimum, if you line up all the days, if all the notifications happen correctly, okay?
That's fine.
Three months to four months has been our practice. So it can't come back next month, but we will, we'll put the watch on it and use it as a learning experience.
So should I alter my motion then to drop Rule 6HX-23-1.31 from approval process today?
That would be appropriate, and then the current rule would stand until it's changed.
Okay. Can I alter my motion that way?
Absolutely.
Mr. Chair? I'm not sure who made this.
I did. I'm following. Okay. Anything else, Mr. Burke? Any questions from other board members? Anyone from the public who would like to speak to these items? Okay, hearing. Mr. North.
I'm not sure that I fully understand why you would need to drop that from your motion, because all we're asking is for a separate rule that will make, will mandate notification. So why wouldn't we leave this, the change as it is, and just adopt the rule of communication? Because they're not the same, right?
You'd have a lag period where you wouldn't have the protection that Mr. Burke is talking about, a 90-day lag. If you, if you adopted this rule and then, and then immediately put into an amended rule that provided for some notification, you would, as you heard, you would be 60 to 90 days out before you had that rule in place.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Thank you. Onto Agenda Item I. Move approval for Items I, I wanted to.
So moved.
Oh, I'm sorry. Need to close the public hearing. Thank you again. Item I, I wanted to.
So moved. We accept Items I, I wanted to.
Second. We have a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Thank you. Agenda Item J. Dr. Law, do you want to talk about any of these audits, sir?
All three are clean audits. That is, there are no findings, which is, of course, the most important salient point. We have three robust organizations that continue to make progress. Our foundation is in good hands with Francis New. Not a good time to be investing money, however, but we have spectacular board leadership, foundation board leadership in that regard. Leepa Ratner is very active, does a really good job. And then the Alumni Association is under the framework of the foundation. Like most alumni associations, they do good work, but there's always more to be done. All three are viable and beneficial organizations, sir. I recommend that we accept the reports and transmit them on as per the law.
We all received copies of the audits. Mr. Burke.
On Francis, on the foundation, we have publicly traded securities, which obviously understand, and then we had other securities, and we went from 3.5 million to 610,000 in other securities. What, what are those items that are others, that are not publicly traded securities?
I'm going to let Teresa talk about that as our treasurer. She will give you the best response.
Let me be sure we do the introductions. Francis New is the director of the college's foundation, and Teresa Furness is a member of ARSTAP, but she serves as treasurer for the foundation, excellent account.
I'm sorry, I was walking up here while you were asking a question, and I didn't get it.
We have non-publicly traded securities. I just wondered what those securities are of 610,000 in the foundation. We had 3.5 million of them last year. I'm just wondering what, what securities would we have that are not publicly traded?
I'll have to check into it.
Okay. If we could check, I am curious. And then, Dr. Law, I just had Leepa Ratner Museum, and I know we're in tough economic times, but just going, several years ago, it was the direction that we were heading in, that we were going to have an endowment of around 2.5 to 3 million dollars cash, you know, securities endowment to help make that. And I'm looking at this, and we're in the few hundred thousand dollar range still, and we put resources in helping make that, make that happen. And then seeing the ticket revenue drop off substantially, almost by 50% from the year before to this year. And I'm, and I'm not, I'm obviously a proponent of this, but I think we need to take a realistic look at, you know, obvious, from where we had planned this to be, and where it is now, it's not there. And I think the question has to be asked, is this viable in the future, or do we have to have a different plan? Because the current plan, obviously, is not going to work. So I don't need an answer. I'm just, I'm sure, it's a challenge I put to you that, that, and I don't want to, I hope you don't think, and I want to speak for my fellow board members, that we're closing any options and saying, this must stay open, or this must stay the way it is. I think when it's not going as planned, we have to look at other, other ways of handling this.
I'm happy to revisit this. We did this a year ago in June. We did a major review. Since that time, we have made the transition to the new director. They have retrofitted the board. The activity level is strong. I guess we'll have to bring it back and say, is their game plan, where are they in the execution of their game plan? I don't know that I can give you that answer. In fact, I know I can't give you that answer this morning. You know, where are we in the tough times?
Okay. Did we, I don't believe we have a motion to accept or approve.
There's, there's specific language, I think...
Item G.
Approve and authorize to submit. You have language on the item, on item, I'm sorry, on Item J. Would you just make sure that the record reflects that the board has approved the receipt and authorized that to be sent forward? That's what the statute requires.
Could I have a motion? Does that affect the...
So moved.
Second. Second by Mr. Gibb. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Can I mention something for the new, benefit of the new board members? These are the direct support organizations that we're responsible for. And apparently, in, in the history of Florida, sometimes the foundations went astray, and Mr. Lang knows a lot more about this than I do. And, and so there's a oversight responsibility of this board on these direct support organizations. And there are certain restrictions they can't do without our approval, like buying real estate and things like that. And that's where they got into trouble. And so that's, that's the reason for this. Just to give you some background on it.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Thank you. Before we move on to the president's report, I just want to make a comment regarding the Leepa Ratner. I certainly would like to look at the game plan and see, see how they're doing. I was at an opening up there two weeks ago, an art opening, and it was amazing. Right. It was thriving. It was packed. And there was an energy there in that museum that I drove back home, and it's about an hour drive, and I thought, I need to go up there more often because it's an amazing institution. And I think with their new leadership, I have hope that they're going to do great things in the future. And I just, I, I just want to make sure going forth from this room that, I'm a big supporter of theirs, and I think if the right things are in place, they're going to be, they're going to be, they are on a good track. So I just, I would be remiss if I did not mention that. Terry, what was that event? Dr. Carney, remind me the name of the artist. He was an instructor at USF.
Frank Rampola.
Rampola. And his son and widow were there. These, these were unbelievably monumentally big pieces of artwork that, this gentleman died at age 40 from a heart disease back in 1972 or '03, something like that. Incredible work. Taught at Ringling. A lot of his former students were there. It was amazing. Great, great, great show. Anyway. Dr. Law, you're up.
Two things. We have a slide on graduation planning. This one, we are adding to you. Here's the, here's the straight scoop. Last year, we awarded 5,200 degrees, okay? Bunch of folks. Typically, in the fall, you see, coming up in December, on December 17th, we will have two ceremonies at the Indian Rocks Baptist Church. Works great for the fall, very comfortable. And the summer, in July, we'll do that same place. Works great once again. Our big graduation, our spring graduation, has always, has recently been held at the, at Tropicana Field, at the Trop. It actually is very comfortable, works really quite nicely, is commodious for everyone. The sad reality, though, is they could not commit to us the dates, our preferred dates, which would be the Friday night or Saturday night immediately following the end of test week, whatever that looks like. We investigated every venue in the Tampa Bay region, including the St. Pete Times Forum and other kinds of things. None, the St. Pete Times Forum with a $50,000 cost associated with it, I might add. None met our needs, as well as Tropicana Field. The guaranteed time, and I have indicated that we'll, we'll make it work and keep struggling, would be a Tuesday morning graduation at 10:00 a.m. Families will have from today until May 8th to be aware of that. For some, it won't work. For many others, it will just be another day that they, they can schedule. But we, we had nearly 1,000 students walk across the stage at that event. So having 1,000 students, we're 500 people, and then four, five, six for each family. We need a place that can hold eight or 10,000 individuals. We did reject Bright House Field. The chances of it being outdoors at that time of year are too risky for my, my flavor for a graduation ceremony. So the best we can say is that for May, for, May 8th on, on the 12th was at the Tropicana Field.
Did we look into the, oh, sorry. Look into the evening? I know I sent you an email on this when I saw the date and the time.
Todd, you can come up. Trust me, we have, they, they have responded, we could not, oh, on Tuesday at evening. I'm sorry, we didn't...
Or Monday evening, any evening. I just think during the day on a weekday is extremely tough on...
Shameless.
On, on our students and their families. And this is, it's going to be actually on a school day, which means if they have children, they won't, you know, they won't be able to go see mom and dad graduate. I mean, we've been to our graduations. It's a family affair. And I was just hoping we can look in the evening and wondered why that option wasn't available.
We did speak with our student government leaders and some other students throughout college-wide to talk about the date and time. They were offered alternate dates and times, including evenings, and they still chose that morning. Felt that it did give enough time for families to make those adjustments. And as you saw, the last evening graduation that we had, students made a huge exodus right after, they poked right across the stage. I think the students talked a lot about families ready to celebrate in the evenings, and that it would be easier for their families to get there early and make that move instead of trying to come 5:00 in the middle of rush hour. So that's what the students shared.
That's what the students decided, and I'm for it.
What was the dilemma with the Tropicana Field not committing to our date and time?
The agreement that places like Tropicana and the places over the convention center, they reserve the right to have a 60-day change notice before any event, and they have some other opportunities that are more fruitful for them at that time. But also, the games also cause a concern. You have to wait sometimes for them to get their game dates and times if they have something going on.
MLB doesn't have the final schedule in place yet. That was one. And two, they have...
Whatever it was.
Some big tickets event.
Is there an opportunity to change the date if, if they get their MLB schedule?
Not for either of the three dates that we proposed last year. Those dates are not available. They have something else already planned on those dates.
And just, I mean, just, I'm asking this question just for my own purposes. Did we, was Mr. Nathan involved in this? Rick Nathan?
No, I did not meet with him. I met with the same plan, and we passed through the last process.
Okay.
Thank you. Anything else, Dr. Law?
I pass out, I have one other item that I'm very proud of. I share this for information, but I know the board likes to show its support. We are moving forward with the preparation for the faculty hiring for next academic year, the year that starts next August. And very proud of the work that Vice President Cooper and Vice President Doug Duncan and the deans have done. We have identified the key positions. There are metrics associated with these. You will see headings that talk about the percentage, whoops, did I give the right one? You will see headings that talk about the percentage, whoops, did I give the right one? Yes. The pers, the percentage of full-time, part-time. And you see the cost associated with the, all the position requests. I'm sorry, I think we gave you an out, yes, here it is. It went from 43 percent full-time ratios to 55 percent full-time ratios. If you look at the bottom of the first two columns. We want to be sure that we have an appropriate coverage for full-time faculty. So that's the number one criteria, is to make sure that there are sufficient full-time faculty. In the best days of our history, we talked about 70 percent of the courses being taught by full-time faculty. If we can get to 60 percent now, that's the promised land. And you see, even with these hires, we'll only be at 55 percent. We had budgeted for the, a good number of these. The retirements come in, and there is a whole range of savings that you see for those. We will be increasing our cost by $130,000 next year if we execute this hiring plan. I think that is, no matter how tough the budget is, I think that is the first commitment that we should make, is to make sure we have the right number of faculty in the right places. So with your, unless somebody has additional comments or concerns, I would very much like to just let you know we're going to move forward with this for advertising and hiring.
Great. All right, sir. Anything else?
No, sir.
Are there any future agenda items that any of the board members would like to suggest moving forward? Hearing none. Our next meeting date will be here in this room on November 15th, 8:30 a.m. So at this time, we're going to adjourn our Board of Trustees meeting. Thank you for coming, and we are going to immediately convene the meeting of the Collegiate High School Governing Board. We all have new packets for this presentation. Lois Metz.
Good morning.
How are you?
Very well.
Very good, thank you.
Joining me this morning is Ian Call, being our curriculum specialist. He kind of serves as an assistant principal of the Collegiate High School. I'm very pleased to share with you, and Dr. Law, this morning, our highlights from last year. Our 80 seniors earned more than $2.5 million in scholarships. Our students attend the variety of colleges and universities, and come to stay right here at St. Peter's College and consider their education. But we're very proud of our students that went forward, went to Juilliard, went beyond ten million dollars, always submitting scholarships. We had a large degree to UF and FSU, and of course, USF, St. Peter's, Tampa are also very popular places to go around the state.
How's the one who went to Juilliard doing?
I think that's my mom's from the audience. Patty Brown. I hear good things. Patty's son, Sam, also was one of the Walker Rising Star finalists, teach flight, and playing trumpet player. We're very, very proud of him. We can't take credit for him, though, in terms of his physical ability, unfortunately. We were especially honored and proud that one of our students was at St. Peter's College, a college award recipient in the past year. She was the first high school student ever to earn that award, and we're very, very proud of her. And she is doing quite well at UF. Our students understand the importance of community service and gave over $19,000 in hours. We had one national merit final, and then we have three finals that went out to the state competition for the PTSA Reflections Art Program. We're very proud of them. Dr. Call, so talk a little bit about our data.
The first thing I want to share with you is how well our students lead our mission. Mission is for students to get a high school diploma, their AA degree, and a bright future scholarship. So you can see across there with our 80 seniors, we had 99 percent graduated high school, 90 percent took out their AA, and 88 percent that got their bright future scholarship. So when you look at these numbers, we're very proud of these numbers, very proud of how well our students do, how well they are committed to their education. Look, we just had a slight drop in our AA graduation rate with our small numbers, a handful of students. Good number of students that had difficult goal lines and weren't able to get that last course in that they needed. We have several of those students that are here now that are completing that AA degree just a semester later. We had a couple that did it in the summer, and we have a couple more that are here now taking classes. And so if you, you know, that rate is when they graduate high school, but if you look at, you know, next semester, that rate would go up. So we're very proud of our students and how well they're doing in that area. Next important data that we look at is how well our students do on the FCS. And as you can see in comparing other local high schools, our students do very well, very well on the FCS. Some of the reasons, some of the curriculum changes that we put in place, especially in math, our students, we like to say a lot of our students take two and a half math classes because of what they need to do in order to move on to the AA degree. So you can see every single student that had a 10th grade passed the FCS math section, 95 percent passed the reading section, and they also did very well, 93 percent in writing and in math. So our students do very well, and especially if you consider, a lot of times, the perception is that we're taking, you know, the brightest students in accounting. That's not what we're doing. We're taking our, you know, lottery system. And so we're doing that for the same students that, that those high schools are doing. So we're very proud of the work that our students are doing and that our teachers are doing to achieve those numbers. Another data set that we're looking at, FCS is 10th grade, so one of the data sets that really we can measure for all of our students is the SAT. In the last couple of years, we started a program over the summer to get some additional help preparing students for SAT and ACT. So we've been putting that in place. And you can see by looking at the years where one of the schools started, those things that we've been putting in place have been helping the students improve on the SAT, especially if you look, the scores have been stagnant nationally. So our score's been stagnant nationally. We've been helping our students to raise their score. And then what we've been looking at is also knowing how all of our students do, but particular groups of our students, to see if there's any areas within that data that we can make improvements. And so if you look at our African-American students, our Hispanic students, we've been making gains with those students, not just overall student population, but for those students, we've also been making gains. So we feel that we're doing a great job there. There's certainly room to grow as the competition for seats in colleges and universities grows. Our students need to be better on the SAT, and so we're looking at how we can possibly improve this year. We're going to make some changes to our SAT prep to help grow those numbers even more. Again, similarly with our writing performance, you can see that we've been growing, actually the 2006, 2007, now today, 447, not 474. So again, we've seen growth through the years as we progress and put in some initiatives. And then, again, here's, if you look at our student population, how they break down according to gender and minority group, and as you can see, we're close to the numbers of Pinellas County. Their minority rate's in the 60s, so we're just slightly higher than those minority. The free reduced lunch is roughly the same again. That number varies widely from school to school, so we're right in the middle of that. So again, our population is very similar to Pinellas County population, and with the results.
I just gave Dr. Law a copy of a letter. We are very pleased that we have just recently been designated as a high-performing charter school. And so that allows us some benefits. One benefit is that Pinellas County schools will now teach just 2 percent as in registering speed instead of 3 percent.
Aye.
It is great. Our accountant will be very happy that she can submit quarterly financial statements instead of monthly financial statements. It also gives us a few other benefits. So we're very pleased that designation is based on high performance in terms of our students, as well as sound audits and being fiscally responsible. I'm very excited about this next item here. Over the summer, we had two teams of students who came in and conducted research under the guidance of our chemistry teacher, Mrs. Jared Vinos, and also this particular team that went forward under the guidance of Dr. Reagan R., who's a St. Peter's College instructor at Adam Davis, who was a lab assistant. And what they did is they mutated bacteria and used a UV box, and they took a look at what kind of impact light and darkness had on that to determine whether or not it was antibiotic resistant. We have submitted one team that has done this research. We're very excited that high school students are doing research collaboratively with the college, and if we're replaced, we'll certainly let you know. We're excited about that. We're also excited that we have taken our leadership plan, which we have been developing over the past few years, and we have now turned it into a leadership course. So our students will get high school credit for the efforts and the experiences they're having in their leadership course. For our new trustees, that covers the area of self-awareness, them identifying where their strengths are, we help them put that into an education career path, and then also business etiquette skills, success, those kinds of things, resume writing cover letters, and then also their service learning project, all culminating in an electronic portfolio. It also makes their load more manageable. Now our students will take five to six college-level courses instead of six to seven college-level courses while they're still gaining those skills that they need to prepare them for the workforce. So we're excited about that. Other new initiatives, we're going to continue to focus on reading across the disciplines, make sure that our students have a very strong reading foundation as they continue on, not only through their time at the Collegiate High School, but also once they continue their educational journey. This is the year for SACS accreditation for us, and they have changed the standards. So I was just talking to Ryan last week, and Dr. Call is going next month, so that we are well informed of the new standards and ready for our site visit, which will happen just about this time next year. And then, as a professional learning community, our staff is working on the book, The Arts and Science of Teaching, which focuses on research-based best practices and curriculum instruction for our students. So those are the highlights that I wanted to share. Any questions? You do have a copy of the budget in your pocket. I know it's very, very tiny there. A little bit of an overview, this is the first time that our funding has been cut through the state, of course, through Pinellas County Schools, about $173,000. And so because of that, we have capped our reserves for the first time. If you look at the, at the budget, you will see that we have used a capital outlay reserve, the previous capital outlay funds that we hadn't reserved, as well as a budget stabilization reserve fund balance, to get our total amount of our budget of just over $1,002,000. One of the things that has increased significantly this year for us is the number of students who qualify for free reduced lunch. We've jumped about 11 points, percentage points, and also more students are needing the bus passes. So our lunch vouchers have increased, and our transportation costs have increased. Everything else, we have cut just a little bit to try to be more fiscally aligned. Any questions on the budget? If I may ask for an approval on the budget, please.
I move approval of the budget.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is parent liaison, and Senate Bill 1546 this past summer requires that we have a parent involvement person appointed, and that that person is name and contact information is on our website, as well as that we notify all of our parents. The purpose of this role is to ensure that our parents know who to contact if they have a concern, and that if they have a need for additional information and they're having difficulty with identification, they know who to contact. I will ensure you that my name and contact information is on every page of our website and all material, but I would like to recommend Dr. Call to serve in that role with your approval.
With approval.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye, opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Gibb.
So there has to be a parent?
It does not have to be a parent.
It doesn't have to be a parent. I would ask, I would ask you, Ms. Metz, because you always go above and beyond, to maybe consider also utilizing a parent along with Dr. Call so that we have more than one person.
I would be more than happy to do that. I don't have a parent in mind, but I think you would love to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for the suggestion. Then the final thing on the agenda is the audit. You should all receive the copy of. I'm very happy that there were no findings with the audit. It was a clean audit, which is what we always want.
And this is just for our review and not a vote? Yeah, approval, rather?
We have always done this review.
Mm-hmm.
And that goes forward with our charter school accountability report to the state, and also Pinellas County Schools receives a copy of that.
Great. Anything else, Ms. Metz?
Thank you very, very much.
Well, I want to thank you on behalf of the board, both of you, for the excellent job you do. It's just always your great, great things about what you're doing. So thank you so much.
Thank you. We love what you do.
I can tell. Okay.
The information is very well presented, Paul, in this book.
Absolutely. Any other items? Hearing none, we will adjourn and see you next month. Thank you.
Thank you.